Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the June 24, 2024, twelfth and City Council work session. We have two items on our agenda tonight, first one being the review of the council rules led by our city attorney Kevin McConnell. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, members of council, Kevin McConnell, City Attorney's Office. I am here to present your council rules Subcommittee proposed revisions to the council rules. So, as you are aware, the council appointed a council rules Subcommittee to review the rules and come back with proposed revisions, if any, and the city council Subcommittee met three times earlier this year, and those proposed revisions are before you tonight. So, I'll focus on, given the lack of time to go over this, we've got about 30 minutes, maybe closer to 45. What I plan on doing is going through the PowerPoint and presenting the overview of the proposed revisions, then getting into the revisions themselves and turning it over to the council for comments and questions on the revisions. So, there are four main areas of council revisions, and the first one has to do with, I think, I need to go back one, decorum. So, there were revisions regarding the interactions among counselors, as well as public comments, citizen comments, ensuring that protected speech is allowed in council meetings while prohibiting actual disruptions of council meetings. There was also changes to the city travel policy. Still, there will be city-paid economy or coach airfare, but the allowance for an upgraded economy or coach airfare if for longer flights, two hours or longer, or when personal circumstances require. Another change, big revision, was the requirement for mandatory Oregon government ethics and council rules training, putting that specifically in the rules to ensure that every member of council has the training that they need to be an effective council member. And then allowance of virtual attendance for council meetings. The rule as it states right now, the general rule is that members of council appear in person, and the rule states currently that it is discouraged meeting virtually more than two times. That changes to allow a counselor to attend virtually if personal circumstances require. And so, those are the four main areas of revision, and I'll go through those right now in a little bit more detail. So, the council rules Subcommittee spent a lot of time on decorum. That's Rule eight, eight B and five D. And looking at that rule, this is the one rule where I actually recommended that the council make a change, and that is regarding current Ninth Circuit case law and how the wording of these decorum rules as it relates to citizen comment. And I'll start with citizen comment, go back to interactions among members of council. So, for public comment, the Ninth Circuit allows a council to prohibit actual disruptions of a council meeting, but any, any further prohibitions on citizen comments, they need to be viewpoint neutral. You can certainly have time, place, and manner restrictions, which you do, like three minutes for a public comment. But, other than that, when you look at the rules that you have currently, it has language on behavior like guffawing, hooting and hollering, boisterous behavior, and depending on the circumstances, that might be protected speech or protected expression under the Oregon and/or federal constitution. So, there is changes to just prohibit actual disruptions. And what that means, how the Ninth Circuit defines that, it's anything that prohibits or inhibits the council from conducting its agenda business. So, this is a limited public forum. The council does have a right to get through its agenda and do the business that it needs to do for the community. I will go back one. Okay. So, as far as interactions among members of council, the council rules Subcommittee spent a good deal of time on that. And one of the things they did, a new current rule eight B one, is just to give a purpose statement, what's the objective of the council rules? And generally, what it states is the council, it can have divergent viewpoints and backgrounds, but at the end of the day, it works together to better the city and the community it serves. There's also a change, and it's not, this has always been a part of your council rules. So, as you probably are aware, you have your council rules, and one of the council rules is anything that's not specifically stated in the council rules, you look to Robert's Rules of Order 11th Edition. So, there is a section in your rule about that the presiding officer decides all points of order and issues of decorum subject to appeal of the council. However, that wasn't specifically set out in the rule. It is in Robert's Rules of Order, and so, the proposed change is to actually detail what that appeal procedure is. Some members of council who desire to appeal a presiding officer's ruling on a point of order or issue of decorum can do so, and that procedure is laid out. There was also a change regarding decorum, just specifically setting out not engage in personal attacks or intimidation of other members of council or any speaker before council. So, generally, under Robert's Rules, you can vigorously debate the item, the agenda item, or the issue, but not each other. You know, you certainly don't, it's not appropriate to engage in what Robert's Rules called engage in personalities, which is impugning on the motives of a counselor, that that person is not being honest, or they had some improper motive for advancing an item or something on the agenda. And then, again, this has always technically been in your rules because it's in Robert's Rules of Order, but it hasn't been in your council rules, and that is a procedure to detail, to raise a personal point of privilege. And this is something that has been in Robert's Rules. It is little used, but it is there, and that is a point of personal privilege if a counselor is offended by the remarks of another council member. They can actually raise that to the presiding officer. The counselor that is raising the point of privilege can then state their objection, and that can be ruled upon by the presiding officer. So, again, subject to appeal. I'll move on. So, another big item of discussion before the council rules Subcommittee was council meeting attendance. So, there were changes, proposed changes to allow members to attend virtually if personal circumstances require, as I stated earlier. Generally, and this has not changed, the general rule is the council should attend meetings in person, but if there are personal circumstances that preclude that, and we don't need to know what those personal circumstances are, you're beholden to the electorate, not to the city staff here. If there's a need for a member of council to attend virtually, you may do so. We do ask that if it's possible that you alert the city manager and the deputy city recorder and the presiding officer of that choice, at least the week before the council meetings. Our council meetings are on Monday, so it's good to have that advance notice, maybe the week before, if possible, so we can prepare for that counselor to attend virtually. There is a requirement that, if possible, unless there's circumstances, there's a technical difficulties, you should remain for the entire meeting. And if you are attending virtually with video capabilities, that you keep your monitor on. The reason for that proposed revision, there is actually a reason, has to do with quorum. We want to make sure that if a person is attending virtually, that they are at the meeting. If, for example, we had a council meeting with three council members attending in person, one virtually, if that person is no longer able to participate in the meetings, let's say, to technical difficulties, we lack a quorum and business should stop. Travel policy. Again, the basic rule has not changed. The city will still not pay for business or first-class airfare, but there was a concern that due to some personal circumstances or long flights, the ability for a counselor to maybe pay for an economy, upgraded economy class seat, and that is a subset of economy and/or coach. It is not considered business class or first class, but there will be an opportunity for flights over two hours long or for personal circumstances to seek that upgraded economy, premium economy class seat and have the city pay for that. And then also up for discussion was a requirement to have ethics and council rules training. That is technically not in the rules right now, but, and you'll see that these are a little different about when a counselor would receive such training. So, the first one, rule, proposed rule eight A four, that members of council required to attend or view an ethics training prepared by the Government Ethics Commission or the city attorney at least once during the member's term of office. Now, that language is very similar to a House bill that was passed last year that will require counselors to attend a OGECC or city attorney, or OGECC training on public meetings law, and they use the term during, at least once during the member's term of office. So, for the next one, and this was done at a request by the council rules Subcommittee at its third and last meeting, and that was added for this work session, is that members of council are required to attend or view a training on the council rules prepared by the manager or city attorney within one year of assuming office. Little different, I think it's really up to the council and what they would like to see at least once during a member's term of office, or within one year of assuming office, or some other time period to receive said training. But I will leave that up to the council and what they'd like to see, if they're interested in this revision at all or not. And then this is a minor change, and this was raised, I believe, by the city council in 2023. The current rules state that the, the presiding officer should ensure that motions are distinctly worded, or motions should be distinctly worded. I think there was an issue about the formality of that, and when I did research and look at Robert's Rules, the intent is that the presiding officer ensure that motions are clear and readily understood. And so, that is the proposed change, a minor, minor change, but the change requested by the council Subcommittee nonetheless, and I think it's a good proposed revision. So, all of these are, the council rules, they distinguish between council rule amendments and repealed and replaced rules. And the only real difference is that if it's an amended rule, if it's passed by the council, it will become effective at the next council meeting. If it's a rule that has been repealed and replaced, it goes into effect 30 days after the change. So, these are all properly amendments. So, they would go into effect if adopted by the council at the next council meeting. Your choices tonight, we can certainly talk about and review these rules, whether you're interested in all or some of these and advancing these forward to a resolution at a general business meeting. You can reject all or some of these proposed revisions, or you can brainstorm and let me know if you'd like to see anything else that you'd like to see revised, and I'll come up with something. And, Your Honor, with that, I will turn it over, and what I will do is I will just pull up, I'll have, base is going to help me, pull up the proposed amendments to the council rules, and I will take your questions, and we can go through some or all of the proposed revisions as the council sees fit.
Okay. Questions for, Council Brooks?
I just had a quick question around the point of personal privilege. Can you differentiate the point of personal privilege from the point of order and how it's used?
Yeah, I'll try to. So, that, I think a point of order, that can really goes to anything that is violates council procedure. If I'm a, I'm on the council and there's an agenda item, and I start talking about another agenda item during that discussion, a counselor could raise point of order, Counselor McConnell is talking about something that is not properly before the council, that would go to the presiding officer, and the presiding officer would then state, Counselor McConnell, that's, that's not proper. You can raise that at council communications or at the properly-agended item that we have on. If it's on the agenda for some other time, they can do it then. Point of personal privileges are, again, I'll say more personal. So, maybe it's not a technical violation of a, of a rule of procedure that you have laid out. It could just be something that a counselor has said, that a counselor finds offensive or improper, or is not factually accurate. I think this has come up in some other places I have worked where a counselor has relayed information, talking about another counselor, about what that counselor stated in a past meeting, and that counselor can raise a point of personal privileges, like actually, that's not what I said, I said this, or I'm going to elaborate on what that meant, if, if it's inflammatory.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks for everybody that worked on the committee, and thanks for all your work on this.
The council Subcommittee did a thorough job with the information they had.
Yeah, I appreciate that effort. Thanks.
Council President Pratt?
Okay, I have a few things. Really great work on this, the committee, and my only question was, well, the existing ones were, the council rules, you require, it says counselors are required within a year of taking office, but then the ethics said during the term, and I'm wondering why you wouldn't make them both, like, within a year of taking office? And part of that's just because I think new counselors especially, that could be very valuable to them, and also because it would kind of let you kind of take care of that one meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I, as I stated, I really was looking for input from the council, so thank you for that. If the will of the council is to see both ethics training and council rules training be within one year of assuming office, I can certainly make that change.
Yeah. Because sometimes you, I don't know, there's things, actual ethical people that don't understand where that line is. That would be why.
Yes, and the only thing that will be different is for the House bill that I mentioned for public meetings training, that has to be put on by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, and that is the latter rule about, or the former rule about receiving that at least once during the member's term of office. That's the language they use in the state statute.
Okay, gotcha. And then, one thing that I didn't see addressed was council communications, and there's no clarity about council communications currently. I think it just says announcements and information by members of council or something of that sort. It's very vague.
That is correct. So, I actually reviewed that and had kind of played with a proposed revision. However, no member of the council rules Subcommittee desired to have that looked at further. So, it was something that I saw, and I certainly, I'm trying to walk a fine line where I'm not coming up with the council rules, the revisions I'd like to see, but I did have a proposed revision to council communications, and I can certainly relay that to you now if I can pull it up.
I have the coffee here.
Oh, you do? Okay, if you have that, if you want to read that.
I'll read it. Okay, so, currently, it just says communicate, or order of business about council communications, communications from counselors, announcements and information provided by members of council. The proposed change would be communications from counselors, announcements and information provided by members of council related to matters such as city committees and boards, as well as city or community events. Members of council may also request inform, or also request information regarding public comment received during citizen comments and raised matters generally concerning the city or counselor city. Sorry. So, I'd just like to throw it out there to the other members of council if they have an interest in that, and.
Yeah, and Council President, I will state real quickly that where that change comes from, again, from Robert's Rules of Order, there is a section on there for the good of the order, and I pulled a lot of that language from the Robert's Rules of Order and crafted a proposed revision that would hopefully meet the requirements of this council. But again, will of the council, whether they want to see that proposed revision or not.
I have one more thing, but we can talk.
Let her finish.
Okay. And then my last just thing was, at the beginning of it, it just kind of says to keep orderly or something, and I just wondered, maybe it's inappropriate, but like, when I looked at the tiger one, it, it tells you the purpose, like, this is to, it just, this one just says orderly, but it, this, the tiger one, it says, and to ensure the mayor and counselors have common understanding and collective agreement, working together in the spirit of partnership. And I didn't know if something like that could be added or if it's not the right place for it.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I, the proposed rule eight B one talks about the, it does recognize that members of council come from a wide variety of backgrounds, but the public stages provided during business meetings should be used to show how individuals with the spirit points of view can find common ground and seek compromise designed to benefit the community as a whole. If that's not the language, maybe that really reaches what you're trying to reach, certainly, these are the council's rules. I will make the revisions that it desires.
Yeah, I think the wording, it's probably the same, saying the same thing. It just seems clonkier, but I don't want to wordsmith right now, so I'm done.
Council Brooks and Council Reyes.
I wanted to respond to Council President Pratt's. One of the comments was, the first one was about ethics training per term, and if it's not somebody's initial term, it's their second term, it still applies, correct?
I think that, not the way I read it.
It says per term.
Let me see, I, or I do have that language. So, I'm looking, I will go back to that. I do have that.
Each term.
There we go. There it is. So, how I read that is, as far as government ethics training, if the language stays that it, they will have training at least during the, once during the member's term of office, if they have a second term, they need to get training again.
I'd clarify that.
And then, again, I think it's the same, if, if the council is interested in having it within one year of assuming office, I believe you could, or read the rules, or we could clarify the rules, that they have training within one year of assuming office and upon, within one year upon reelection, or something like that. We can certainly do that.
So, yeah, my concern with the, with the adjustment is I think a differentiation between your initial term and terms would be good, and the second part of that is if somebody missed that training that was already on council, I don't know if it needs to be within the first, what was it? Like, they could catch the next year?
Well, for what we have proposed drafted for the council rules training, there would be plenty of opportunities to receive training. So, if a, if a council member missed a training that the city attorney or city manager put on, that could certainly be provided again by staff. As far as the Oregon government and ethics training required for the public meetings law, council would probably want to make sure they attend that. That's the state law about attending public meetings training. For the government ethics training that we have here, the local training, that says prepared by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission or the city attorney. So, there would be ample opportunity for the council that, a counselor that missed a particular training to have that training again, because you do have staff here.
Okay. I just, I think that having some differentiation between an initial term and a second term might be helpful with that and have more flexibility with that. The training is better now that we can do stuff on Zoom, but sometimes that training was really hard to get to, and it was all over the place, and I don't know how they're going to continue that. And then, as far as updates, I feel like, you know, we can keep current if we've already been trained the first time. In the next term, we could keep current without having to be really picky about the time limit. That's just my thoughts for discussion. And then, my next thing was with the conversation around, what's the next one? The specificity of the council communications. My concern about changing it how it is, from how it is, in response to Council President Pratt's comments, is that if we're talking about county things or other places, that we touch responsibility. Sometimes we talk about going to events that may be not in the city, maybe in, like, somewhere that was interesting or that we could learn from as a city. So, my concern around it is the flexibility around not having to stay within the city, because I think that we can learn a lot from wherever we go sometimes, and sometimes those conversations are relevant, only if you feel like it's a relevant conversation. But I think the spirit of it, what Counselor Pratt's saying, and what the committee decided both, I'm in agreement with of, of it being in the good, in the spirit of being in the good of the city, if that makes sense. But I'm a little uncomfortable limiting what the sphere of experience that we would consider might be helpful, because we learn about policy from so many different places.
Council Reyes?
Yeah, just, I have a few clarifications that I, I thought I heard, and I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding. Thank you for working on this. I think it was, it's great, and it was due, I think overdue, I think. But, Counselor Pratt, when you were talking about communication, I'm also in agreement with, with Counselor Brooks, where, you know, where we can share things that we learn from other events that we attend, not on behalf maybe of the, of the council, but sometimes, like, I might attend a tiger event and learn something there, and would like to share it during council communication. I think that if we limit ourselves to just to all attendant, we might, or like, business committee, committees that we are assigned to, to attend, then we might restrict ourselves from sharing other things that we see in other, other cities, other, other events that we, I try to attend. So, that was, the other thing that I, I'm having a bit of, it's not, it's just a really, something personally, but I feel like if I, if I would be someone else. I would like to know if this is a proposal that you're asking the council to consider. When we speak, I think that would be very important to me to understand, or is this something that we're telling the presenter to do? Sometimes, I'm not sure whether we're at, we're saying, okay, council, we, let's, this is a part of the discussion we're having so we can guide the presenter or the staff member. I'm having sometimes, sometimes there, things have been said, and I'm like, wait, I didn't even get a chance to speak about that. Or, so, I think that, I would like, I would like it to be, and I don't know if it's something that I should bring this up here or not, but I would like it to bring it, to say, okay, this is a proposal, this is not, that we can, as a council, discuss. This is not something that we're, I'm already directing the staff to do. So, I'm having a hard time sometimes when, when we speak. What is an actual proposal that we're asking? Because I'm, I actually did not understand your proposal right now where you were talking about communication. So, my question would be like, can you clarify what you're proposing so I can understand what you're saying? Because I felt like I'm not, I felt like you were telling the attorney what, what to do. So, that's why I'm just, it's, it's just my, my only, it felt like you were saying, this is what we want to do, and I'm like, wait, I didn't even get a chance to understand the proposal. So, that's, yeah.
So, I did, I did read it and say, I want to put it out to council. I tried to be clear and say, I want to put it out to council. be clear and say, I want to put it out to council for discussion, and that's why I said that. I'm not saying we're doing this, but I'm, I'm saying this is a suggestion. So I just want to be clear about that.
Are we going to discuss that, or are we just?
Yeah, and just that's it.
I'm keeping a list of requests.
Oh, okay.
And then, like, if we want, like, like, right now, what I'm hearing is from you and Counselor Brooks, is that this is maybe too, like, and I'm just thinking, like, we went to the city of Milwaukee. Does that count as a community event? If she goes, you know, if we, if I go to C4, is that like, so maybe we need to broaden this somewhat to include those other things we do that benefit, you know, all of us by hearing about them.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Because what I'm doing, I'm keeping a list of what you guys are suggesting.
Oh, okay.
And we're going to circle back on it. I don't want to do one at a time. I want to get the list done, and then circle back, so we can hear everybody's ideas.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. And as far as the ethics, my question was the same thing with that Counselor Brooks brought up, which is, would this be, the way I read it is like every term versus term of, like, if I'm here, if I'm, this is my second term, and I'm, do I have to take, again, the ethics training, or is it something that I already took it? So it's kind of like the same question. So we need to clarify that. Is it, if you're over, your second term, sorry, you're on your second term, do you need to take the same training, or is this something that could be, okay, you took it already, you don't need to, kind of thing? So, that's all. That's all I have. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I had one.
Someone new first.
Well, mine's really quick, because it kind of, that's on what Maria said.
Right, but we're going to circle back on these discussions. Counsel Hillier.
Thank you. Just very quickly, I guess in the language that Council President Pratt read, I think that we owe it to ourselves to define the word general in that. Okay? And that's one thought that I have. And the other is, in the ethics discussion, like there are a lot of, the, the committee discussed that quite a bit, and there are a lot of careers out there that people every two years have to go to an ethics training. So our recommendation is that, yes, every time a new group is elected, things change in our world and that sort of thing. And so we felt really strongly, as a unified group, that, that this would be something important and benefit our community. So I just wanted to put that out there on behalf of the group.
Counsel Brooks.
I just wanted to mention, or wonder about if Counselor Reyes's concerns around what you just said about process, if that would be a point that she could say, ask for a point of personal privilege to clarify what was going on. Is that a good way of using that rule?
That would be technically one way. I think a, a better way would be, again, I don't want to get too hyper-technical on the Roberts Rules of Order. Your council rules actually state not to, essentially not to nitpick the finer points of, of parliamentary procedure, as long as everybody understands what's going on, not to do that. But I think if there was clear, I'll give an example. So there is a agenda item, and a counselor is making a presentation or giving their, their point of view, and generally, our council rules and Roberts Rules of Order, they direct counselors to direct questions to the chair, to the presiding officer. There is a mechanism for a point of, a point of information, where you can request that a counselor answer a specific question about an agenda item, and as long as that's acceptable to the presiding officer, that's the way that a counselor who maybe is confused about, or needs their memory refreshed about a particular item, it's a point of information. They can ask the question of the other counselor. That counselor can then answer the question, and then you move on with the agenda.
With approval of the chair?
And, and the, the chair would say, yes, that's fine. And it can be very informal.
Okay. So I think that's a tool, and I think it's an important tool for people, especially people that have, you know, different language understandings, and all different kinds of technical understandings, and, you know, anyway, but it's a nice thing, because it is part of the conversation, I think, that is really important to me, is keeping it professional by addressing the chair and then utilizing language, but not feeling like the rules are in the way of you being able to, you know, debate and express your viewpoints freely, because you're elected representative, just like everybody else.
And I, I think that not to, we want to ensure that the rules are, that they're not so particular, and, and so, it's so hard to understand. So Counselor Reyes, to your question, do you have to remember on the fly, that you have to say, point of information? Or can you just say, Chair, can I ask a question of Counselor X? You can do that. The, the chair will know what you're talking about. You don't need to remember point of information, point of personal privilege, as long as you can, you know what you're trying to get at. Where, the, the, the presiding officer is there to work with the members of council, and again, keep a smooth-running council meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm not trying to be picky either. And I also think for the chair, if we do know what we're asking, it's good to help direct that, so that everybody's on the same page, because.
And, and just so all, every counselor is aware, so the, the presiding officer chairs the meeting, the council rules state that the city attorney is the parliamentarian. So I will advise the council on points of, rules of procedure. Now, I certainly don't, I will not jump into a discussion unless I'm asked. I will let the council go, but if the presiding officer, whoever that is, at that particular council meeting, there's an issue, that they don't readily know the answer, or a counselor member doesn't know the answer, they can certainly ping the city attorney. Sometimes I know the answer off the top of my head, sometimes I might need five minutes to come up with an answer, so a short break would be helpful.
Five whole minutes. All right, thank you so much.
I, I just want to make sure, like, if there's a question about if we're just discussing or giving instructions that any counselor wants to recognize by the chair, could just ask that question, because likely, if they're asking that question, they're not the only one wondering.
Yeah, Council President, that, a point of information can be raised at any time.
Other questions, comments?
If Council President Pratt would please read that, that paragraph again, please? And that'd be great.
Okay. Communications from counselors, announcements and information provided by members of council related to matters such as city committees and boards, as well as city or community events. Members of council may also request information regarding public comment received during citizen comments, and raise matters generally concerning this council or city.
Okay, so I, I have one clarifying question. Thank you for that. So I, I am concerned to be limited. I know, I'll use one example that I think is probably pertinent. I like to talk about schools and what's going on in our school district. This rule that you're suggesting to adjust would bar me from bringing up schools, and the concerns, constituents of twelfth and have about public schools. Now, I know that we have no jurisdiction, but I feel that that paragraph aims to limit those kinds of comments. Is that correct? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ask critical question, but I just make a general statement.
No, thank you, Counselor Gonzalez. And I, that, that is, that is a good question, and I will attempt to answer it. I don't believe that it does. It depends on the individual facts and circumstances of the council communication. So how I read this, I think it's broader than maybe some of the counselors are reading it. I, I think it does allow for regional events. Not to get too technical about rules of statutory construction, but it, it, it does state in pertinent part, related to matters such as city committees and boards, and city community or community events. And you can also raise matters generally concerning the council or city. So if there was, and I, I won't use that specific example, but it's Counselor McConnell, I want to talk about something in council communications. And I think it generally affects the city, so I'm going to start talking about it. And there is a point of order from another council member, point of order, this is not what this agenda item is for, he's outside the bounds of that agenda item, this does not affect the city. So what, what would the council do? And it would utilize the rules that it, that it has already, and, and what it will have specifically if these rules are revised, is that the presiding officer will make a, a call on that, because they get to decide points of order and decorum. And so the presiding officer can say, Counselor McConnell, you're out of order. We, you need to stand down. We're not going to talk about that anymore. So what would you do if you were that, what would I do if I was that council member? I didn't like that decision. I would make a motion to appeal. And that is perfectly allowable. If that's seconded, then that issue would go before the entire council on whether, now, do we want to go down that road? I don't think the council wants to do that every meeting, but technically, that is an avenue that the council could take. You could vote on that to determine whether Counselor McConnell's discussion in council communications is related to a, a city or community event. And at that point, the decision of the council would stand. So if I decide that, I can decide, well, I'll, I'll abide by the council's direction, and I can stand down. If I don't, and I keep talking, well, there is a disciplinary procedure in our council rules and the Roberts Rules, anywhere from the presiding officer requesting an apology from that particular council member, all the way up to expulsion from a particular meeting and/or censure.
Thank you very much for that.
Counsel President Pratt.
I guess what's hard for me in this is that, I think, I don't, I think it's great to have information from everywhere, but I think there's a fine line where we're going to give our perception of going to something, but that we're not using this to give, like, a personal opinion. Like, for example, I could say, I went to Blender Dash, and I thought it was a fun event, but if I start saying, I don't think we should have Blender Dash, I think it's a waste of our money, is that, like, how do we make it clear that that's going to, where that's going too far?
Yeah, Council President, that's a, that's a line, I don't think, it would be very hard to put down on paper where exactly that line is. That, that example you just gave, if we're talking about a, a waste of taxpayer money, maybe that is related to city business. If I, given my example, if I'm giving a council communications in a bid to seek reelection, and I'm going to have talking points, is that something that council communications was meant for? That's up to you, and you'll decide whether I get to talk about that or not. And we have, you use your procedures that you have, that counselor who processes a right to appeal, and that can be heard by the council if it so chooses. And you would move on, and that, that, that issue would be decided, one way or the other. Yep.
Counsel Brooks.
To this same discussion, my curiosity is around content as far as making factual statements or misleading statements, and are there any ways that we have boundaries around that? That's where I would like to strengthen the content. So is there any kind of cure?
We could certainly attempt to draft one. We do have one for a counselor who believes they have been misstated, or that a counselor is making misleading statements about them. That's that point of personal privilege. As far as making misleading or inaccurate statements based on outside events, we could certainly try to craft something. I, I'd have to see if there's anything already in the rules that might apply to that. There are, there are a ton of rules and Roberts Rules that aren't in your council rules. That would be a very large document. But generally, councils are, counselors are supposed to obey the presiding officer's direction, subject to appeal. They're not supposed to disrupt or impede any council meeting. There's a lot of things like that, but I could certainly look further into that.
Thank you. I'm interested in that.
I got two things, we'll circle back to the list. So going back to disruption of a council meeting, and the hemming and the hawing, the brouhaha, that was all put in there because of what was happening in Portland City Council, and the tactics used to stop city business. So, not that I'm second-guessing the Ninth Circuit Court, but do we need having the rules, at what point can I just stop the meeting? At a certain point, what, does it have to be codified, where I've had enough of people going brouhaha, or hooah, hooah, I can just stop the meeting, and everyone has to leave? How, how is that handled? Because I know TTSD does it.
Yes, and I don't know if you need to put that in the council rules. I think that's within your inherent authority to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. But as they're written, it, it speaks to actual disruptions. So the, if you actually did have people that were engaging in threatening behavior, or engaging in such disruptive behavior, that the council simply, they can't hear what's going on, they can't conduct business. The procedure that is recommended is the presiding officer, first they would give a warning, and you would ask that that, whatever that behavior is, to stop. If that person or group of people do not stop, you can certainly ask the sergeant of arms, that could be the police chief, to have those persons removed from the council meeting. And they would not be allowed to come back for the rest of the council meeting. They would not be arrested at that point for disorderly conduct. The only time a person would be arrested for disorderly conduct, if that behavior was so threatening, adversely affected the public health, safety, or welfare, was an actual threat of violence, you would have that person removed from the meeting, and you would direct the sergeant at arms to have that person arrested for disorderly conduct. There's also a procedure for that. You would have every member of council on the record just actually state what they saw. So there is a record of that. If that person were to sue, then a court of competent jurisdiction would be able to determine, okay, yes, I saw the video, this is what I heard, this is how it affected individual counselors they feared for their safety, or, and talk to other members, maybe the, if there was people in the audience, staff members, that yes, I felt fearful for my life, or I thought there was going to be violence in the council chambers. As far as taking that next step, is like, all right, we're going to have, we're going to, we're going to go somewhere else and finish our council meeting somewhere else. I think if it got to that point, yes, you would have that authority to do that and finish the meeting without community members present.
Do you, in your opinion, do you think that should be in the rules, or we play it by ear, or have a, a template, if we will, if you will, that in the event this happens, here's the script, kind of idea?
Mayor, I could certainly attempt to craft something, but I think that with, I think that's inherently within your authority. I don't know if, if you want to be that specific. We certainly, I could give it a shot.
No, I'm just, I'm asking your opinion. If it, if you think it's too tedious, or that, you know, you know, now I know what the script is, actually, to do it, that, that works. It could just be, you know, here, here's the steps you have to go through to, you know, about issuing the warning and stuff like that, that's good to know. I don't know if it needs to be in there or not for...
No, Mayor, I don't think it does. I think that if we go through that process, and I'm here for every council meeting, so you would obviously, you would work with me. I will, if, if you have a question on something as an actual disruption, I don't think you're going to need me to tell you when something's an actual disruption. You're going to know. But I can certainly assist the, you, or whoever the presiding officer is, that generally, we try to give a warning. Now, if the behavior is so bad and so threatening, no warning need be given. That person could be immediately ejected and arrested for disorderly conduct if that was the case. Hopefully, that won't happen. But as long as you make a record, and these meetings are recorded, and if we go through the colloquy of every person giving what they observed and how it affected them, I think we would be fine for, on legal footing.
Okay.
Yep.
My second point is on being absent from meetings, and being able to attend via Zoom, which I think is fine. But there's a city in the county where a counselor refuses to come to city council meetings, and will only do it by Zoom. And that is a risk, and it throws off their city council. And so how could we address something like that?
Go back to that specific rule.
I mean, before we had the, you had, you know, two or three strikes, and you get a warning, but it just meant, some people could abuse this. And there's a city council out there that's doing that right now. Not in this form.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I think that there would be a way for a council to discipline potentially a counselor who...
They're having a difficult time, they're doing it.
Who just, who refuses. And I, unfortunately, I've been through a disciplinary proceeding for, I won't name the person. It was, it wasn't an elected official. It was a, a commissioner that was appointed by a counselor that did some things that they shouldn't have been doing. But how I read this rule is, it's, the expectation is to attend in person. The intent was to attend virtually when personal circumstances require, not just because you want to. And I think that if you had that specific situation where a counselor says, I don't where a counselor says, "I don't care what the rule says, that means I'm going to attend virtually every time. You don't need to know why. It's none of your business." I think there would be a mechanism to have, that counselor would have, be afforded due process before any action were taken. But to have something like a mini-trial, if need be, where if a counselor is refusing to attend, the presiding officer could determine that IT would not make a Zoom link available, or would not have them on camera, and they would be forced to attend in person. And if they had a problem with that, they could certainly seek out their own legal counsel and challenge the council's decision on that.
Okay. Counsel President Pratt.
Just on that point, could you kind of add, like, like, after three consecutive meetings, you know, they shouldn't do it for more than a certain number of meetings? Because sometimes someone might be ill or traveling. That's totally acceptable. But if someone's doing it just to kind of skirt the rules, if you had some consistent number that they'd have to explain extenuating, or something where there's a little more power to stop that behavior if it's not for reasonable circumstances?
Yeah, Counsel President, that's the will of the council. I could certainly craft something to make very clear that the intent was to give an allowance to a counselor who needs to attend virtually. And not, it's not a free pass to attend virtually, because they just don't want to show up to a meeting. And how, I think how it was envisioned by the council rule subcommittee, there could be a circumstance where a parent has had a heart attack or something like that, and they need to be in, on the East Coast for two months.
Yeah.
That's a personal circumstances that require you not, that you can't be here. You need to be somewhere else. That's perfectly acceptable. But just because, I'd rather.
Stay at home.
Stay at home, because it's, I don't want to drive to the city services building. That's not a good excuse. And that's not how this was intended. But we can shore that up.
I'm just curious. Oh, thank you, Mayor. I guess I wonder if we need to add language that says that a counselor can attend, but what changes is our ability to vote. Right? Just, does that make sense? Like, because, just because we're in attendance virtually, this doesn't say that our vote, that we can vote. Like, I could attend anytime, virtually. But I've noticed that when counselors do attend virtually, or the mayor, you don't vote on issues. Or do I just misunderstand that?
Usually vote.
Oh, okay. Well, I just wondered if we wanted to ensure that there was language in here about that, and that that would be a potential remedy for people outside the whatever we set as parameters, is that you can, well, you can attend if you want, but you can't vote, or something? I don't know if that's an option or not.
I, I think I could.
It's going to be tough.
Attempt to shore up the language, but making a rule that would preclude an elected official from doing the job that they were elected to do, that might present a statutory or constitutional issue.
All right. So we've got five minutes left, so I've got my list here. So the first one, reoccurring theme, was better defining training, especially around the Oregon Ethics Board, that it should be each elected term, I'm hearing, versus your term. Yeah. Everyone sound okay with that? And what about the council rules? So if every elected term, you have to attend the Oregon Ethics.
Sounds great.
Then what about for council rules? Every term, or just once?
I would do it every term, because I think it's part of team building. But I do think that if it's your second term, that there should be an allowance.
Can you turn your mic?
Sorry.
I think it should, if there is a second term, there should be allowance in case somebody is out of town or dealing with something, that they could not have to do it their first year if they miss it, you know?
Their first year?
I think that was the deadline, that you have to do it in your first year. But for me.
You can't get it done in a year? The council rules?
Well, I just, I just was thinking about the city, like, having another meeting instead of just going to the next one that's in two years, because you've already done the rules before.
I mean.
That's all I was thinking.
I learned something. I learned something new all the time, so whatever. So, yeah.
Counsel President Pratt.
I kind of like it in the first year, because I got appointed in a weird time, so I missed all that. And I had to kind of find out some times after I wish I knew.
I mean, because for, especially the council rules, you just have to schedule a meeting with the city attorney. All right. So what's the decision? I'll go the easy one first. So on Zoom only, you're going to craft some wordsmithing about making sure someone doesn't abuse that, so that they just attend purely by Zoom? Does that sound okay? Sure.
The social worker on me. I, I think that we also, though, have to make sure abilities are included in that conversation, because somebody might be elected that could not leave their house for some reason, and I don't think that should preclude them from being elected.
Sure.
Plus, I think we might add a.
Yeah. Again, the council communication, where are we at with that wording? Do we want wording? Do you want Kevin to give it a shot? Or do we just want to leave it alone?
What is the, what is?
Leaving it alone.
The way it is right now.
The way it is right now.
Yeah. It's pretty wide open.
And then the proposal is to change it to what? Counselor Pratt, President Counselor Pratt proposed.
Or some form of it.
Some form that would make it clear that you can bring in other communications about. I guess the point is to make it related.
Can you turn your mic?
Oh, sorry.
My point is, I use Kevin's wording, but my point is that it's not just saying some appointed committee you're on it, it's saying things that are in the interest of the city, is how I would put it.
And remember, we're not deciding if we're going to come bring back a draft. Then we can tweak that draft until we're happy with it. So you're not approving it to me.
Yeah. I, I'm fine with that, yeah, with the best interest of the city.
Counsel Brooks.
I still have the spirit of community with it as well, and a nod to that, and a nod to it being factual and not some kind of a impassioned, false thing.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else? All right. Well, thank you, Kevin. Got what you need for.
Wait, the only other one that I saw, was that replacing 8B1 with the Tigerd preamble? Would you like him to relook at that?
I thought you said you were happy with what?
Oh.
Ike.
Sorry. I don't know if anybody else is interested. I just think the wording's kind of.
Which one is it?
It just says the, at the purpose of the beginning of it, it just says to create order. I thought it should just be more about, so we're working together in the interest of the city. More, the Tigerd is really nicely worded. But in general, it says the same thing, just not as nicely.
I like that, I like that illuminated, myself. The spirit of working together. I think that's a really big part. And we haven't had to have this conversation before, but I think it's an important part of the conversation today.
All right. So what's missing from when that's up there now? That we can barely read? You can read that?
Wow. It's impressive. Can you read it?
It's Rule 8B1.
Is it, is it the one?
Yeah.
The city council is comprised of individuals with a wide variety of backgrounds, personalities, values, opinions, and goals. Despite this diversity, all have chosen to serve in public office in order to preserve and protect the present and future of the community, the public, stage provided during businesses, meeting, business meetings should be used to show how individuals with this.
Disparate.
Disparate, yeah. Points of view can find common ground and seek compromise.